This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of the town of North Haven.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Can I get your attention? My name is Stacy Yarborough, and I am the Town Clerk and Tax Collector for the town of North Haven. At this time, I would like to call the annual town budget meeting to order pursuant to Chapter 7, Section 706 of the North Haven Town Charter. It's been a long time since we've all been together. It's good to see everyone again. Welcome back. Real life. I always like to start off each of these meetings with a quick little breakdown of the history of a budget, in case you're not quite aware of the process. So you might wonder how we create a budget for the town. Each year, in about November, December, each department head and the Board of Education is asked to submit a tentative budget for their departments for the upcoming fiscal year, and then they present that to the Board of Finance. In each new year, the department's head is required to defend their particular budget at a Board of Finance meeting workshop, as well as the Board of Education doing the same. The Board of Finance then takes all the information they've accumulated, and they create a tentative budget, and with that, a tentative mill rate to make said budget a reasonable expectation. The tentative budget was presented this year to the town at a public hearing, which occurred in April online. The next step is what we're doing here tonight, which is the annual town budget meeting. After tonight's meeting, the next step is for the Budget Referendum. The Budget Referendum is Tuesday, May 18th, 2021, and the poll, which is at the Recreation Center, only just the one poll for a referendum, opens at 6:00 in the morning and is open until 8:00 at night. Finally, assuming that the budget passes, the Board of Finance meets the next day on May 19th to set up the mill rate. At that point, as tax collector, I can then start the process of preparing the tax billing for our new fiscal year, which go out in July. Now, before we go any further, the first order of a town meeting is to elect a moderator. A moderator must be a registered voter in our town at the last election, and only those citizens registered to vote in North Haven and citizens of the United States 18 years of age or older, or one who pays taxes in the town on an assessment of property not less than $1,000 on the most recent grant list may vote. Lastly, for the vote upon the moderator and any other properly noticed issues before the town meeting, all the same regulations will be enforced. You have to be an elector to be able to vote. If you're not sure if you're an elector in our town, I do have our list of electors, and you can check with me to be sure. At this time, I'm going to open the floor for nominations for meeting moderator. There is a nomination for Valerie Gutkin. Is there a second? Okay. Are there any other nominations from the floor for meeting moderator? Hearing none, I'll close the nominating process and put this to a vote. All in favor of Valerie Gutkin as meeting moderator, please signify by saying aye. All opposed by saying nay. The vote for moderator passes in favor of Valerie Gutkin. I declare Valerie Gutkin the moderator of this meeting. Good evening. Pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 7-7, and in accordance... Excuse me, I'm sorry. Thank you, members of the town meeting. At this time, the town clerk will read the call of the meeting.
Thank you, Valerie. Notice is hereby given pursuant to Chapter 7, Section 706 of the North Haven Town Charter that the annual budget town meeting of the electors and citizens qualified to vote in town meetings for the town of North Haven, Connecticut, will be held in the auditorium of the North Haven High School, 221 Elm Street, on Monday, May 10th, 2021, at 7:00 p.m., with masks and distancing required. This town budget meeting will conduct the following business: One, to consider and act upon the recommendation of the Board of Finance to take action regarding the budget for the fiscal year July 1st, 2021, to June 30th, 2022; Two, to establish the due date and number of installments for the payment of property taxes, real estate, personal property, motor vehicle, and supplemental motor vehicle, in accordance with Sections 12-142 and 12-144A of the Connecticut General Statutes; and Third, pursuant to Section 7-7 of the Connecticut General Statutes, to adjourn said town meeting at its conclusion and to submit the question concerning the adoption of a budget for fiscal year July 1st, 2021, to June 30th, 2022, to a vote by paper ballot on Tuesday, May 18th, 2021, including the establishment of the exact hours of voting at referendum pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 7-9B, that voting will take place between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. at the following North Haven polling place: All districts, Mildred, Wakely, Rec. Center, 7 Linsley Street. The aforementioned recommendations will be placed on paper ballots as the following question: Shall the town of North Haven, in accordance with the recommendation of the Board of Finance, approve and adopt a budget consisting of $53,383,064 for the town government and $58,470,730,000 for the Board of Education, for a total amount of $111,853,794 for the fiscal year July 1st, 2021, to June 30th, 2022? Voters approving said question will vote yes, and those opposing said question will vote no. Applications for absentee ballots will be available in the town clerk's office in 18 Church Street, North Haven, Connecticut, dated at North Haven, Connecticut, the 23rd day of April, 2021, by Michael J. Frida, William J. Piper, and Sally J. Buamey.
Thank you, Stacy. Pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 7-7, and in accordance with the action taken at the Board of Finance meeting on April 21st, 2021, this town meeting will adjourn at its conclusion and submit the question concerning the adoption of a budget for fiscal year July 1st, 2021, to June 30th, 2022, to a vote by paper ballot. This vote will occur on Tuesday, May 18th, 2021, between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. at one centralized polling place located at the Mildred-Wakely Recreation Center, located at 7 Linsley Street, North Haven. Voters approving said questions will vote yes, and those opposing said questions will vote no. Again, voting on these questions will not take place tonight. We will only be voting on Item 2, establishing the due dates for payments and the number of installments. The town clerk will now read the first and third items on our agenda for consideration. Agenda item number one, to consider and act upon the recommendation of the Board of Finance to take action regarding the budget for the fiscal year July 1st, 2021, to June 30th, 2022; and Agenda item number three, pursuant to Section 7-7 of the Connecticut General Statutes, to adjourn said town meeting at its conclusion and to submit the question concerning the adoption of a budget for fiscal year July 1st, 2021, to June 30th, 2022, to a vote by paper ballot on Tuesday, May 18th, 2021, including the establishment of the exact hours of voting at referendum pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 7-9B. The voting will take place between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. at the following North Haven polling place: All districts, Mildred-Wakely Rec. Center, 7 Linsley Street. The aforementioned recommendations will be placed on paper ballot as the following question: Shall the town of North Haven, in accordance with the recommendation of the Board of Finance, approve and adopt a budget consisting of $53,383,064 for the town government and $58,470,730,000 for the Board of Education, for a total amount of $111,853,794 for the fiscal year July 1st, 2021, to June 30th, 2022? Voters approving said question will vote yes, and those opposing said question will vote no. Okay. For any ensuing discussion, all speakers must be recognized. Come to the microphone and clearly state your name and address. You must come to the microphone, or your comments will not be audible for the broadcast. Discussion should be limited to the pending question. I'd like to open for discussion, and I'd like to invite Versa Leckman-Frida to the podium.
Thank you very much, Valerie and Stacy, and welcome. It's great to be back in front of a live audience. So tonight, I'll be presenting the town side of the budget. We'll be turning it over to Mr. Sturke to present the Board of Ed's side of the budget. I'll start off by saying that there will be no tax increase this year here in North Haven. We're pleased to be able to have a no-tax increase because there's several reasons. Number one, we continue to be well-managed financially. During this pandemic, many municipalities were battered by the storms, both literally and figuratively, in terms of what happened this past year. Despite the fact that we had almost $1 million in one-time expenses, we survived and worked our way through that. We are still rock-solid financially. We continue to be AAA-rated financially, at a time when municipalities across the country are being downgraded because of the condition of many of their governments themselves, and also because of respective state governments across the country. Although this year, we only grew the grand list by 0.4%, the year before, we had a record grand list increase, which was over 9%. And we will continue to grow our grand list by bringing in new businesses. In this year's budget, the 0.4% yielded about $340,000 in incremental revenue. And number four, we've been preparing for paying the debt on our middle school, our police department, and our firehouses for the past several years. Ed Swinkowski, our Director of Finance, and I spend a great deal of time every day managing the finances of this government. A good example of some of the things that we do behind the scenes, we look and we've refinanced some of our debt. Starting this year, we refinanced many of our bonds from notes from the past, and we're saving $2,130,000 over the next three years. That allows us to keep our debt structure, our debt ratio to expenditures, stable for this year and the next couple of years, at a time when we still have to pay on all these new buildings that we've built, including the high school that was completed in 2005. We're still paying the debt on the high school. When we look at the town side of the budget, we see when we look at the change in dollars on the town side, the Board of Ed's side, when we look at capital this year versus last year, the contingency remains the same at $300,000. This is a 2.9% increase in this year's budget expenditures. And for that, we are actually enhancing services. We are adding two firefighters to address the magnitude of the calls that come in, particularly on the 911 medical and even fires this past year. We're addressing the rising crime that we see in municipalities all across the nation in terms of things like car break-ins. We're adding three new police officers this year. Keep this in mind, ladies and gentlemen. When Universal Drive was built in 1985, we had 48 sworn officers back then. Since I've been in office, we've added two. And think about 48 officers at a time when Universal Drive wasn't even built out yet. And here we are, all these years later, we have 50, and I've been very diligent and trying to add three more officers to support our police department. We're adding infrastructure improvements, we're adding capital, which we'll go through in a moment. So we're having a no-tax increase in enhancing the service model here in town and not taking away any services and supporting the Board of Education. So this budget adds $1,146,485 to the Board of Ed. It adds a little bit over $2 million to the town side of the government. This budget enhances our current public safety services to our residents, and once again includes capital expenses of $972,000 with no tax increase. Let's take a look at our debt. I referenced it earlier. When we look at the debt structure, 52% is on the Board of Ed's side. I'm sorry, this is the budget. When we look at the budget and we look at the dollars, 52% of the dollars are on the Board of Ed's side, and then we see the town side of the budget. But let's take a look at the debt. I wanted to make sure that these slides are in order here. Let's go to this debt slide here. There's $5,816,995 on the Board of Ed debt side. So when we look at the debt, we are still paying on the high school, as I said. We are still paying now, we're starting to pay on the middle school. So we see the ratio of debt on the town side to the Board of Ed's side. And we're one of the municipalities, and not all of them do this. We handle the Board of Ed debt on the town side of the government. Some municipalities include it on the Board of Ed's side. We do not do that. 68.8% of this current debt in this year's budget is to support the middle school and high school, and we gladly do it. If you recall, years ago, our high school was on the, our middle school was on the verge of being condemned. And back then, early on in this administration, I remember walking through the middle school, walking through and seeing all the problems, and working with NEAS and the Superintendent of Schools and the Board of Education. That middle school is critically important to us, and one of the many reasons why people still want to move here to North Haven. And I'll talk about that in a moment. When we look at the capital requests, on the police side, this is strictly capital, it does not include the three new officers. We have three new police cruisers, laptop computer replacement, body armor, very important for our police officers, and emergency light and siren package, three of those, and the capital is $205,000. With respect to our fire department, we have a total of $420,000, and that is broken down by station security, a new ladder truck lease, two leases in terms of engines, and a fire station generator. These are all very critical to enhance public safety. From a Department of Public Work standpoint, we have a total of $215,000 with four new vehicles. We are also requesting through the waiver system, with OPM at a state level, another $417,000 to be utilized out of our municipal grant and aid package that the state provides us every year. These four are built in to this budget. When we look at the library, staff lockers, a new generator, $53,000. IT, we're investing $60,000. Martha Culver restoration, there's $18,000 this year. And we have worked hard to improve the exterior of Martha Culver, but there's a lot to be done there over the course of time on the interior. So the total capital is a little bit less than what we proposed in last year's budget: $972,150. This is the way the capital breaks out: by department. You see the pie chart, and you see the percentages of allocation based upon the $972,000 in capital requests. So the current mill rate this fiscal year, which ends June 30th, is 30.72. The new mill rate will be 30.71. This will be the sixth time, ladies and gentlemen, in the last several years that there's been no mill rate increase, no mill rate increase here in the town of North Haven. And what did our residents receive in return? Well, even though there's been six no-mill rate increases, we have renovated a new middle school. We have four new fire stations. We have a new police department. We've paved over 100 miles of roads. We put a new roof on the Historical Society building. We added vehicles, much needed, that were over 25 years old in our fire department. We've had technological upgrades throughout the town, including a major upgrade in conjunction with building a new police department that ties in the police department and the school system for emergency responses. We've added, prior to this year, six firefighters, with two more in this budget. We added, about seven or eight years ago, two police officers, that does not include the three we're requesting in this budget. We upgraded our whole town communication system. When you receive a message from me during a tornado, that's an example. We've picked up massive amounts of tornado and storm debris. And we didn't, we did it, we did it internally, and we were able to work the costs out, even though it was not, it was not a budgeted expense. We've created a town emergency operations center that's headed up by our fire chief, Paul Janushevsky, with updated technological capabilities. We've improved the town's infrastructure overall, and at the same time, we support our education system. As a result of all this, this is to me from the residential real estate agent community here in North Haven and in the region. North Haven is a town that people want to move into because keeping up with infrastructure, an outstanding school system, a stable mill rate, and economic development success. Property values are now increased in North Haven. And over the course of the past several months, there have been bidding wars on streets when homes have gone up for sale, where people are paying more than the asking price because of the demand here in North Haven. And I think that's a good thing for all of our citizens to have that as an environment here. As Stacy mentioned, the referendum will be Tuesday, May 18th. All voting done at the Mildred-Wakely Rec. Center. So I support this budget wholeheartedly. We are on a perfect track here, ladies and gentlemen. We will continue to deliver positive outcomes here in North Haven. Just about an hour and a half ago, in addition to families wanting to move in here, into North Haven, young families, businesses want to continue to come here. About two hours ago, I had a major business in town that called me. They want to expand and add another 100,000 square feet because they like being here in North Haven. You've heard me say, during the pandemic, we lost 37 economic development projects during that time, this past year. All of them are resurrected right now. All of them are in motion. If you read the back of the North Haven magazine, you see some of the projects that we're bringing forward. And that's just the start. There will be more businesses coming to North Haven. There will be top-line revenue growth. We're not only bringing new businesses into town, we're expanding with existing businesses. An example of what I just mentioned: Where a major business wants 100,000 more square feet here in town. These are all good things for our citizens. Anytime you can equalize the tax burden by bringing businesses in to spread out and ameliorate the burden for our citizens, that's a good thing. I said it before, and I'll say it again. This government will never be derailed for as long as I'm your first electorate in delivering positive outcomes. We will face every challenge with confidence, courage, and a great conviction to deal with those challenges and to produce positive outcomes. North Haven will continue to be successful. Thank you very much. I'm going to turn this over to Patrick Sturke, and then at the end of this presentation, we will take questions on both sides: the town side and the Board of Ed's side. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Tonight, I will be presenting the Board of Education's budget recommendation for the 2021-2022 school year. There's very little change to the overall budget at all levels and within all departments. The majority of increases are a result of contractual obligations and cost of benefits. Within this year's budget recommendation, there are no new programs. There is a recommendation to add one full-time and one part-time position. Special education is the most unpredictable and fluid area of the budget because it's dependent on the needs of students. This is the area with the greatest number of variables, and is vitally important to project accurately. No matter how accurate we project, the biggest unknown is the amount of money we will receive from the state in the excess cost reimbursement. In creating this budget, we were committed to maintaining these priorities: maintain the district's focus on improving achievement for all students, adjust instructional needs associated with the recovery from COVID-19, meet contractual obligations, meet the 2023 graduation requirements, and address the social-emotional needs of all learners by beginning to increase the level of support services within our schools and district departments. The proposed budget recommendation provides the following: Resources: To educate over 3,000 students. Mental health, nutrition, and medical care to allow students to access instruction. Specialized services required for all students to meet their potential. Diverse opportunities for students to engage in activities outside of their curricular pursuits and transportation to and from school. The 2020-2021 approved budget is $57,324,245. The Board of Education's proposed budget recommendation for the 2021-2022 school year is $58,470,730. The requested increase for the 2021-2022 school year is $1,146,485. This reflects a 2% increase. This 2% increase will meet all of our contractual obligations, healthcare benefits, and increases in facilities and educational equipment and software. There are no new programs included within this increase. An additional school psychologist is included to continue to prioritize the social-emotional needs of all learners in addition to a part-time human resources clerk. As you can see from this breakdown, 88% is dedicated to salaries, benefits, transportation, and special education tuition. In regards to the special education tuition, the district is strategically investing in staff and resources to enhance district programming and support all students. Our goal is to educate North Haven students in North Haven public schools. In order to do this, we must create and enhance in-district programming, which means, which meets the needs of different learners and allows our students to stay in district while also realizing a cost benefit to the town. As I stated earlier in the presentation, two new positions were added to this budget. A new school psychologist, who will focus on providing support to the district therapeutic learning services, was included in this year's recommendation. This position is needed to support our current learners, but will also serve to bolster in-district programming and will allow out-of-district students to return to North Haven. The second position is a part-time human resources clerk. This position is needed to assist in meeting the necessary HR needs. NHPS is due to receive $947,509 through the SIR2 entitlement and approximately 2.4... NHPS is due to receive $947,509 through the SIR-2 entitlement and approximately 2.4 -- that was just updated today, I apologize, there was a meeting today that we got our official amount, 2.4 million, through the American Recovery Plan. These funds will be used to provide additional services for students, such as spring and summer intervention and enrichment programs, upgrade technology, health and safety requirements with respect to full in-person learning, and potentially address the district's capital needs. Any additional federal funds, including the SIR-2 and the ARP, will not be utilized to supplant any area of the 2122 operating budget. These are additional funds and are designated to provide additional services or to fund capital projects. North Haven is known for its commitment to education and the community's support of the Board of Education's annual operating budget. I continue to look forward to our collective work as we continue to deliver an exceptional education to the children and families of North Haven public schools. Thank you.
Okay. So now that we've heard from Mr. Frida and Mr. Sturck, I would now ask if there's anyone here in the auditorium this evening that would like to speak to the budget. If you could raise your hand. Ms. Bwame?
Good evening. I'm Sally Bwame, 5 Blossom Drive. It's really great to be here in an in-person meeting and see all of you. And I'd like to say to everyone here and everyone listening at home, I hope you're doing well and you got through this very difficult year and this pandemic the best way possible in a healthy fashion. And I wish you all the very best. And I hope to see lots of you this summer at the Town Green for the concerts. Before I talk about the substance of the budget, I just have a few comments procedurally. I'm a little disappointed in how the budgetary process went this year. For lack of a better word, to me, it was a bit sloppy. And the reason that I say that is because a lot of the numbers in the budget book that was presented at the budget public hearing on April 6th, it just did not match the resolutions that the Board of Finance passed on March 17th. I just want you to remember the total budget number. It's $111,853,794. Keep that in mind because I'm going to reference it a lot. I think for some reason it was etched in stone. But I was very disappointed. I don't know if the town attorney is here. Is a town attorney here, Madam Moderator?
I do not believe there is a town attorney present.
Okay. Because I did have a legal question about the notice that went into the paper prior to the public hearing. The total on the bottom of -- the Town Charter, Section 705, requires a public hearing as part of the budgetary process. And the legal notice went into the paper, the Board of Finance must provide all of our taxpayers with a proposed budget, listing all of the expenditures for the ensuing fiscal year, in this case, 2122. And the notice in the paper, the legal notice, had all of the different departments listed, but the totals did not add up to what was the bottom line. The bottom line was adjusted to match the Board of Finance resolutions. The total was off by $633,840. I brought this up at a Board of Selectmen meeting, and I was hoping to ask the town attorney if that difference had any impact on the legality of the notice. But I can move on. I just didn't like how, for example, on the website, all of a sudden you saw a revised Page Six of the budget just appeared, changing the bottom line. For those of you not familiar with our budget, Page Six is probably the most important page. It summarizes all of the expenditures, and it also summarizes the funding to meet the obligation for those expenditures. And the bottom lines never matched. The budget book that I picked up at the town clerk's office had a different number than what was in the resolution. So I just thought it was a very sloppy budgetary process. But let's talk about the budget that we have. If you all picked up -- if you all go online, you will see the most recent version of the budget. It is the Board of Finance's budget from April 21st, and it's the budget that you all picked up, you that are here, picked up in the box provided. One thing I want to say about the First Selectmen's presentation, this is a budget town meeting. It is not a state-of-the-town meeting. And I was a little disappointed that the last five to 10 minutes of Mr. Frida's presentation, he had slides up about prior years, six firefighters, all prior years, two policemen, prior years, all of the talk of the communications center, the new police department, all of these great things that have been done really are not relative to this budget. And I'm a little surprised that the moderator did not rule him out of order for giving what I thought was a campaign speech in a state-of-the-town, rather than sticking to the budgetary amounts. So let's talk about the budget. First, on the Board of Ed side, I do have -- I made it quite public that I would support a $200,000 decrease in the -- a $200,000 reduction in the increase of the Board of Ed budget. Before I get to that, let me just say, Mr. Frida, I really appreciate that Mr. Frida said that there's no tax increase, and he didn't emphasize that this budget technically does have a bill rate and therefore tax decrease. It's 1/100 of a mil, going down from 30.72 to 30.71. So I do understand -- what was that? Did someone say something to me?
We're ready for questions from you.
Madam Moderator, am I allowed to comment on the budget at the budget town hearing? Or do I have to ask only questions?
No, you may comment.
Thank you. So I will continue to comment, and I will have questions. This is a town meeting, and I'm allowed, as a duly elector, taxpayer, to speak. I do not have to ask questions, although I do have some. So the mill rate is going down a little bit, 1/100 of a mil. So if your house is assessed at $250,000, your taxes will go down $2.50 for the year. I think we could do better. Lots of our town citizens, especially those in jobs like -- who in restaurant industry or lodging industry, are really still struggling. This is a working-class town, and people are still struggling. And I think we could do better than a 1/100 of a mil decrease. And with all of the money coming in from the federal government, the American Rescue Act, which hasn't been mentioned at all, which I think is a huge part of any budgetary process, I think that with that money coming in, a total of over $8 million, we just heard 2.4 million is going to the Board of Ed, another 2.3 million to the town in one form, and another 4 million coming to the town from what's called county money. So over $8 million is coming into the town. And if you look on Page Seven of your budget book, only 1.17 million is reflected as a revenue source in the budget book. If you look on Page Seven, you will see the ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act, 1.17. And I think we could up that a little bit more to about 1.6 to 1.7 million. The reason I say that is we're getting 1.17 million, we're getting half of the town money this fiscal year, in literally a couple of weeks, and the other half next fiscal year. It is that half coming in next fiscal year that you see reflected in the budget. I think we could do a little better with that. And I'm not even touching the 4 million that is coming in on the county side. So I do think that we could do a little better from that perspective. Now, at the April 6 budget public hearing, and again tonight, we heard Mr. Sturck, our superintendent, say, and at the April 6 budget hearing, he said this at minute 12 and 10 seconds, he said, and I quote, "ESER and federal rescue money will not be utilized to supplant any area in the 2122 operational budget. This money is designed for additional services and capital projects." Close quote. Well, I disagree with that. First of all, there's two parts to that. He's saying ESER and Federal Reserve money will not be utilized to supplant the operational budget. Again, look at your revenue budget on Page Seven, and you will see right there, ESER-2 money, and the amount of 400, I think it's about $473,755, to be exact, is in fact being utilized in the revenue budget for this proposed 2122 fiscal year. So to say that ESER and federal rescue money is not being used is incorrect. We could already see that ESER-2 funds are in the budget, therefore they are supporting the operational budget. And I disagree with him regarding the federal rescue money. I believe that federal rescue money can be used to supplant the operational budget. And in fact, you know, a section in the Act states, and again, I will quote it, it's 2001, Section E, Subsection 2, Subsection R, says that federal funds may be used for, quote, "other activities necessary to maintain the operation of in continuity of services and continuing to employ existing staff of the local education agency." So I don't think that -- I believe that there is some discretion to use some of this 2.4 million that's coming in from the American Rescue Plan to help supplant the operational budget. So I disagree with his general statement said at the public hearing and said again tonight. And so for this reason, I think that we can reduce the increase to the Board of Ed budget by 200,000. Again, I'm trying to give you, the taxpayers struggling during this pandemic, a little bit more of a break than just one cent per every $1,000 of assessed value. I'm trying to give you a little bit more of a mill rate break this year. The reason why -- now, when I announced this 200,000 at the public hearing, I got a call from an irate citizen saying, "What are you doing, Sally?", suggesting that we should reduce the Board of Ed budget by 200,000. That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying we can reduce the increase by 200,000. As we heard Mr. Sturck say today, the increase is 1.146 million. That's an increase over the current year. I'm saying reduce that increase by 200,000, bringing it down to just a $914,000 increase. So I'm not suggesting we cut the budget. I'm suggesting we could cut the increase. And the reason why I believe that is severalfold. One, first of all, that amount is the exact amount that they requested, the Board of Ed, back on January 14th of 2021, before we had any knowledge of the 2.4 million coming in from the American Rescue Act. And the Board of Ed received from the Board of Finance every dollar that they requested, quite unusual. And I can remember many prior budgets, including Mr. Sturck's, the budget last year, which was Mr. Sturck's first budget, where the Board of Ed requested 2.9 million, and they received a 2.7 million authorization from the Board of Finance, a $200,000 reduction. And that was able to be absorbed. And I could remember many times in previous budget town meetings with the prior superintendent, Dr. Cronin, when he was confronted with reductions in his increase request, he said, "Fine, I could absorb that because of the health insurance changes and because of the retirements of high-end, long-term teachers are now retiring and being replaced by newer teachers with lower values, with lower salaries." So on the town side, for example, our original health insurance line for employees was 7.4 million. It was cut several times during the budget process, and it is now 6.7 million. So my question for the superintendent is, are there any decreases, like the town realized since January 14th, in the insurance, health insurance for Board of Ed employees? And secondly, the other -- on the retirement question, I do know of at least one, I saw in a local magazine, I saw that one long-term teacher, a music teacher at the high school, is retiring. And I'm wondering if there are any other retirements that have come in since you did this budget increase on January 14th? Again, these are normal reasons why the prior superintendent used to say, "I could deal with these decreases because of decreases in health insurance and retirements." So my question for Mr. Sturck is, are there any other retirements, or are there any other changes in the health insurance line where you could absorb a $200,000 reduction as you did last year?
Thank you, Sally. So as regards to the medical, we are currently underfunded in our reserve, and we are trying very diligently to make up that difference. So we are, I think the basement for where the funding should be, should be at 1.6 million, and we are currently not there. So all this 2% increase will help us recover some of that. As far as retirements, yes, there have been retirements. I think we have maybe three or four on the board agenda for Thursday night. And sure, there may be savings to them. I do not believe there's $200,000 worth of savings. But at the same token, we are still trying to catch up to this medical reserve that we have been underfunded for some time.
Okay. Right. Well, so you said there's another, there are about four retirements?
I think so.
Total?
Not total, but coming out, I can give you a more accurate number if I go check.
Okay.
But there's at least four on the agenda this month.
Okay. Because again, I recall one year from your predecessor, Dr. Cronin, not too many years ago, less than three, where he was able to easily absorb a $600,000 reduction that the Board of Finance hit him with between health insurance and retirements. But you're saying that you cannot?
Yeah, I'm worried. I'm a little worried simply because I think a lot of our staff members have delayed some voluntary medical procedures and whatnot. And we're not too sure where those claims are going to be coming in or if they're going to be coming in, so we want to be prepared for that.
Okay. Well, I was just wondering, because I saw such a dramatic decrease on the town side. And you know, the town has 207 full-time employees and the Board of Ed, about 463, I believe. So I thought maybe there was a little bit of wiggle room there. But I also wanted to comment on what I see in other towns. For example, North Branford, I talked with an official at North, the town of North Branford today, a matter of fact. And the town of North Branford, if you read today's paper, their Board of Ed, which again is smaller than ours, but everything's relative, their Board of Ed budget is 32.4, ours is proposed 58.4, I believe. But their Board of Ed came to them with an increase this year, just as Board of Eds always do, and they're getting zero, not $1 of increase. And I said, "Well, how is that?" And he said, "Come on, Sally." And he said, "Come on, Sally, look at all the federal money they're getting." And I looked at East Haven, again, in a newspaper article. They requested, the Board of Ed, a $1 million increase, and their mayor is proposing only a $50,000 increase. In Shelton, they represent, the Board of Ed requested a $2.9 million increase, and Mayor Mark Loretty is proposing that they get only a $135,000 increase. I am proposing nowhere near the drastic reduction as those towns, a zero reduction or almost miniscule reduction compared to the increase requested. I am saying, let's shift a little bit of the obligation that the Board of Ed needs, just 200,000 out of a 1.1 million dollar increase, let's shift a little bit of that obligation away from our taxpayers, give them a little break, and let that money be covered by not only the 2.4 million coming in from the American Rescue Act, but the Board of Ed also has about $670,000 in reserve in a couple of accounts left over from last year's surplus, as well as the $934,000 in ESSER funds. So my, my request for a $200,000 reduction, I think, is reasonable and nowhere near as drastic as other towns are doing. But I think that we could do other things as well. For example, with the police. Now, I have always supported very strongly our police department and had a very good rapport with the prior chief, and I'm trying to develop a good rapport with the current chief, who just took office the past October. But the three new fire, the three new police officers, I think, could be reduced to two. Mr. Frieda said, wrote in the back of the North Haven magazine, that the three police officers are to help fight increases in crime, specifically the, all the break-ins. I think we could do just two and see how it goes for a couple of years, and then look at the data and see if we see some decreases, and then, and then in two years, hire two more. So I'm, I'm actually looking to hire four, but phasing in two and two, just as we have phased in the firefighters. This year, we're hiring the last two in a phase in of eight new firefighters. We did two, 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 and two. So I think this year, where Mr. Frieda stated he was disappointed in the grand list growth, even though $340,000 of new revenue came in, he has stated that he was disappointed in that growth, but he's confident that there will be more growth in the future in our grand list. And you know, I believe him. I've said it before, I'll say it again, nobody works harder than Mr. Frieda, and I think that we will see economic growth as we slowly climb out of this pandemic. But to hire three now, when we're still in the pandemic, seems a little fiscally irresponsible. So I think we should hire just two police officers, study it after two years, and then hire two more, hopefully when the grand list is much stronger, as Mr. Frieda has predicted, and as I have confidence that he will do. And then at that time, we could hire two more police officers. I also think that we could get away with just one new fire engine rather than two. In the capital budget, you will see $120,000 for two fire engines. That is just the startup cost to order them. After that, it'll be $300,000 a year for five years. So we're talking about a big investment here, folks. I think we could do just one fire engine. And in fact, when I brought this up at the public hearing, both Mr. Swankowski and Mr. Frieda were exasperated with me, saying, "Why are you saying only one fire engine? That's all that's in the budget." They thought it was only one engine. They thought when it said "fire engine two" in parentheses, that it was fire engine number two that was being replaced. And they seem satisfied with that. So my point is, if Mr. Frieda and Mr. Swankowski thought it was just one, and they were so satisfied with it, let's do just one. And I just want to remind everybody, in the last three years, the taxpayers of this town has paid 1.3 million for a new ladder truck, $750,000 for a new fire engine, and $300,000 for a new used ladder truck. I supported all three of those purchases. I believe our firefighters need updated, updated engines, but I think for this fiscal year, when we're still struggling to get out of a pandemic, that one fire engine, which is what Mr. Frieda and Mr. Swankowski originally thought it was, that one fire engine is enough. So that saves 60,000 to the taxpayers this year and 150,000 going forward. I also think that we could take two more vehicles out of Public Works. One is a $61,000 vehicle and one is a $62,000 vehicle. That would save the taxpayers 123,000, and we could assign those for the grant aid waiver formerly known as MRSA. The Board of Finance has already taken out, and as Mr. Frieda accurately stated, other equipment totaling $275,000 that are earmarked for these waivers. When we use waivers, ladies and gentlemen, what we're doing is we're using money that we already have in a special fund. And I'm saying, let's use that money and save the taxpayers some money in this fiscal year. So I believe that we could do better than the one one-hundredth of a mill decrease. I think that we, if we incorporate a little bit more of the American Rescue Act money and put it on the revenue side, in addition to the 1.17 million that's already there, plus all of these reductions that I have outlined, 200,000 to the Board of Ed, about 85,000 for just, for eliminating one of the three police officers, the engine, the reduction in capital, I think we could get there. I also think that we can take $61,000 out of a line item in central supply for maintenance and repair of the radio system. That was surprisingly, much to my surprise, that is currently budgeted at $70,000 in the current fiscal year. With just a couple of months left, we've spent nothing. Every month, I get the Board of Finance monthly expenditure reports, we've spent nothing on that line, but it went from 70,000 to 131,000. And so I think that that could go back to 70. So that's another $61,000 reduction. So with all of my ideas for curtailing expenses and a little bit of an increase in revenue, I think that we could do better for our taxpayers who are still struggling in this pandemic, and we could have a significant, perhaps a .4, .3 to .4 reduction in the mill rate, which would, which would equate to actual savings and not just one penny for every $1,000 of assessed value. So I urge folks to vote no on this budget. I think the Board of Finance should sharpen their pencils and come back with a better number. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you, Ms. Blamey. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? You can raise your hand, please. Mr. Katz?
Sherman Katz, 40 Sherwood Drive, resident taxpayer of North Haven for 53 years. I've attended many meetings, Board of Finance, selectmen meetings, back over 50 years. And we have an elected board called the Board of Finance. Normally, they investigate all of the requests for money. And I'm sorry to say, this is the first year that I think they did not do their due diligence. This is a year when it's very difficult financially for many, many people, and to rubber stamp pretty much the requests, not right. I, I am not an expert in our budget, but I can see between a 770,000 and a $1 million decrease that would not affect the Board of Education, education to our kids, or the residents of the town. I ask, you vote no, send it back to the board. We've done it in the past, we can do it now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Katz. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Ms. Caldwell?
Jenny Caldwell, 69, Kimberly Circle. I actually want to start out with some questions for the Board of Ed, regarding the Board of Ed budget. I don't know if the superintendent can come out. The first question I have, is there any way to get the budget so that you can actually read the numbers? Because I have looked at this online multiple times, but a majority of the numbers are so light that you cannot actually read them and discern them. So is there any way to fix that?
Yes, I believe that there is. We can take a look at it, the budget book. Is that from tonight?
Yeah, but it's been, I've been following the budget through the whole process.
Yep.
And I've been following the Board of Finance meetings, and this is, this is the way it's come across almost every single time.
Okay.
And it just makes it difficult.
All right, I apologize.
To actually look at the numbers.
Okay.
Don't go anywhere, I want to ask you another question.
Sure.
Because at the, at the last meeting, I had asked about the salary increases for the administrators. And this has been an issue for me, I'll be honest, over, over the past probably six or seven years. But it's, it's stark this year. There are 19 administrators, and according to the budget booklet, it looks like between this year and last year, the majority of people are getting a raise in COVID year of between, you know, 3,400 to 3,800. But then you've got some administrators with raises around 6,000, 8,000, we've got a couple at 5, 13,000, and then 17,000. And I just think that you're asking people who make a whole lot, a much smaller amount of money, to constantly fund increases for people who are making sometimes twice as much. And it also concerns me, because even when I was on the board, I see administrators who, I'm not saying administrators shouldn't get raises, they should, absolutely. You know, you guys do a lot of work, you work really hard, I think you should get, you should get your raises. But I also watched contract negotiations for people who are probably some of the lowest-paid workers in North Haven, who are very important to the education system. And it was a struggle to get 25 cents more an hour, and those staff members were making less than most surrounding towns. So it just concerns me that this has been the trend, to pay administrators significantly high raises every single year, and we're holding back on people who are making less money. So, you know, in terms of tax increase, it not only impacts your local taxes, but on the state level, when you have people who are not making enough money so they can afford the health insurance that they are getting through the school district, because you've got high deductible plans, then they end up needing, requiring Medicaid, which then becomes a tax on the taxpayers of not only North Haven, but the rest of the state. So in terms of budgeting, that's a concern. But you had said you thought there were some issues at the last meeting with the way the, the salaries were, were in the booklet from last year. So can you, you were going to check into that and get back to us on that. Were you able to find those answers?
So I believe that some of the changes is because we've had administrators on leave this year, and we brought up a teacher to the, to the Administrative Union temporarily to cover that leave. And we've also changed, there's been a domino effect to that, so there's also been an administrator who's been assigned to a different building, and there's been a change in salary there. So that's accounting for some of the changes in there.
Well, you had, there's a third column, so there was a, again, this is like written very lightly, so I'm having a hard time reading it, but there was one that was the budgeted amount and then the adjusted amount. And you had said they were incorrect numbers in the budget from last year, and so that they were adjusted, I think it was your finance person.
Okay.
Was going to explain that there was some errors in how they were in the budget last year.
Okay.
I never heard back. So if we can find out what the accurate numbers were for the budget last year for the administrators, because the amounts in the middle are significantly different from what was, it says was in the budget last year.
So Ms. Caldwell, can I come to you after and like really look at the exact line items?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
So I think those are my, my biggest questions. I also have concerns on the town side of the budget there, and this is just a comment. On the town side of the budget, we seem to be doing the same thing. We've got a handful of people making, you know, $10,000 more in a single year. And I just think when you have taxpayers that are struggling, it's, it's a problem. And I'm, I'm struggling with that issue. I also agree that the revenues that are coming in from the state, from the state and the federal government should be reflected somewhere in the budget. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Oh, Ms. Barrett?
I apologize, it's very difficult to see.
That's fine. Hi, everyone, I'm Nancy Barrett, I live at One Crestview Drive, and I'm on the Board of Finance. So I'd just like to make a very brief comment and just state that in this particular year, if we did not get the federal funding, we would be in big trouble in this town. The American Rescue Plan Act couldn't have come at a better time, and it is helping us both in the current fiscal year, and it will help us for at least the next two years. So I would like to first of all, thank you, President Biden, as well as those members of Congress, both on both sides of the aisle, that actually approved this, because we as taxpayers are certainly benefiting from it. Secondly, I'd just like to point out that, again, as Mr. Frieda pointed out, last year at this time, of course, we were all really suffering from the very throes of this pandemic, and that certainly was an enormous concern for this town. But on the positive side, we also saw a very large increase to our grand list, approximately a 9% growth. And yet, despite that enormous growth in the grand list, we really only experienced a very slight decrease in our mill rate. And this year, while we did not experience a big growth in our grand list, we did experience this influx of federal funding. On the town side, 2.3 million dollars plus potentially an additional $4 million, and on the Board of Ed side, the ESSER funding of almost $1 million, plus an additional $2.4 million. And again, despite this big influx of federal funding, I'm calling this effectively a zero mill rate change. I consider a .01 mill change to be effectively zero. So I'd just like to point out that, that these, these changes should be passed along to the public and to the taxpayers of North Haven when it's needed the most. I think, as has been pointed out this evening, there are people in town that are still really suffering, and we didn't reap the benefit last year, and at this point, there are no plans to pass along that, that benefit to the people of North Haven. And has also been pointed out, at a time when people are still out of jobs or experiencing significant reductions in their income, I just cannot justify significant salary increases for selected people on both the town side and on the Board of Ed side. So I'd just like everyone to really consider, what are the short-term and long-term consequences of this particular budget? And in my opinion, I think that this should, should not be approved. I voted against it. I voted against the version that went to the public hearing, because that actually contained a mill rate increase. And I don't approve this particular budget, even though there is effectively a zero mill rate change, because again, I feel as though with this federal funding, that the taxpayers should really derive the benefit from that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I believe Mr. Frieda would like to speak.
So I just wanted to make a couple of comments, because I listened very carefully to some of the dialogue. And to say that if we didn't get federal stimulus, the town would be in deep trouble is false. is false. Because we have allocated a little bit short of 1.2 million in federal stimulus on the town side. As I said many times before, at Board of Finance meetings, Board of Selectmen meetings, that, that money is, is to be utilized under a federal guidance program. I can make an argument that because we're well-run financially, we didn't get nearly as much as many other cities and towns. I can make an argument that with the pandemic affecting 37 economic development projects, the federal stimulus money in this year's budget is not enough to offset what the grand list growth would have been. And what they're not telling you is, that as part of the federal guidance, you cannot use it to reduce the mill rate. Under their plan, you'd be subject to a federal audit, similar to an IRS audit, and you'd have to pay it back. The federal stimulus money cannot be used to reduce a mill rate. That's from the federal government. I know that, because I talk to the federal government. I know that, because I'm one of the leaders in the state from Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, and I'm chairman of the Local Regional Council of Governments. I'm in conversations every day on this issue. Let me repeat, you cannot use the federal stimulus to reduce the mill rate. You will be subject to an audit, and you'll have to pay it back. The federal stimulus on the town side is earmarked towards specific guidance, a loss of revenue, sewer, water, broadband improvements, and to address unbudgeted expenses that came up as a result of the pandemic. So let's take a look at the grand list. .4%. I would have projected it would have been 2.5% to 2.8% on the heels of a 9% increase. A 2.5% increase in a grand list is huge in municipal government. So we've got 1 million, a little bit less than 1.2 million allocated in this year's budget. We don't know what the county funds are. We have no idea yet, it's still in process. We're not going to put in a revenue figure that, which we don't know yet. So the 1.2 million on the town side is designed to offset unbudgeted expenses, to help smooth out a loss of revenue, building permit fees is a good example, as a result of our building permit fees not coming in this fiscal year versus the budget that we put in, that's what the federal money is, is to be utilized for. To say that we should reduce the mill rate by utilizing the federal stimulus, I want to repeat it for a third time, it would plunge the town, and any city in town, into a federal audit, and you'll have to pay it back. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Yes, can you come down? Yes.
All right. My name is Bill Pantalone, been a resident in North Haven, happy to be 40, about 45 years.
And your address, please?
What's that?
Your address for the record, please.
Oh, yeah, 98 San Muscat Avenue.
Thank you.
And a lot of my family lived here for years. My main point is, I'm happy with Mr. Frida, we, I'm happy with this town, it's an excellent town. When you see what's going on around you, you really have to be very satisfied. My main thing is, I was a firefighter in New Haven for 30, 30 years, and of course, sometimes I've gone to meetings and got police and fire a little upset with me. But my main thing was, the budget always seems to be, you know, in line, but my main concern is, like what we had the problem in the city of New Haven when I was a fireman, the overtime went out of the, to the stratosphere, and what happened was, the guys were retiring with, you know, private, 60,000, 70,000, I mean, it was totally out of control. And basically, believe me, I liked the overtime myself at the time, but that was caused by a lot of unforeseen things, like affirmative action, different things like that. We couldn't hire people because of the minority lawsuits going on. So we, and guys were retiring, and you couldn't replace anybody because the lawsuits were pending. So everything exacerbated itself, but what happens is, on the pension side, you have this crazy cost that just goes crazily out of proportion to what, in other words, what I'm saying is, it'll tell you what the budget is for police, this, that, teachers, but it doesn't say what, how much each, how many firefighters, policemen, teachers, and this and that are, how much they're, how much they're getting paid, each one. So I could find out if it's commensurate with what everybody else gets around the state. You follow me? Because we had an incident in, in New Jersey, I'll never forget, well, there's a lot of them, because I don't forget, I remember things going back when I was in kindergarten, because I have a mind like that. And there was a city, a town in New Jersey, where the people that were running the city or town got so entrenched, and there was a lot of wealthy people who lived there, but these people that were working in, in the town, nobody was watching, and they were paying themselves like 200, 300,000 dollars.
Well, I don't believe-
It got totally out of control, so what happened was, finally they got caught up, and they all went to prison. So I'd basically like to know, you know, basically what each firefighter gets as a salary. If it's, if it's in line with what everybody else gets, that's fine, teachers, you know, public works-
The individual salaries are not listed within the, the contents of the budget itself, that's something you would have to seek through probably a FOIA request, I'm, I'm not sure.
Yeah, basically, that's, I mean, I have nothing with, I mean, we have a fantastic police department, fire department, teacher, I mean, I'm talking, I'm happy with, but I'd just like to know, you know, like I say, I explain myself pretty much.
Okay, well, thank you.
I have Mr. Frida, I love the guy, I think he's tremendous, doing a beautiful job. Everybody does a good job, they work hard, and then, and I know some people who work within the town, too. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Yep.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment or question? Mr. Nuzalillo?
Good evening. Pasquale Nuzalillo, 7 Mansfield Road, North Haven, I'm the chairman of North Haven Fire Commission. I believe it's a daunting task for the Board of Finance to go through what they have gone through for months, to listen to and approve all of the requests that have come through their department, and I commend each and every one of those members. It's, again, a daunting task. I also believe that it was not done in a careless motion, or a careless way, it was very thoughtful. I believe there was a significant amount of time and effort and energy that went into the evaluation of what the requests were, and there were some reductions that took place, and caucusing that took place on the Board of Finance, and I know that personally as a result of the fire department. We are a very well-run municipality. Thanks to our Board of Finance and our senior leadership, and Michael Frida at the helm, this town has done miraculously well in comparison to other communities throughout the state of Connecticut. And I, I believe that our residents are served through quality customer service, both through, certainly our Board of Education, our fire and police departments, our public works, and all of the employees that provide services for our residents. Our residents are very fortunate to have a no increase in this budget. I certainly would recommend that every resident in the town vote in favor of this budget. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening? Mr. Lazaroff?
Larry Lazaroff, 30 Mallory Street. I echo the words of Chairman Nuzalillo, that we live in a beautiful community, run fiscally, financially correctly, with due diligence done by all involved. I'm involved in Police Commission, and I can tell you that our commission and our police department, as well as our fire department, is very well-run. The requests that we make are necessary. We prefer to be proactive than reactive, and I hope that everybody does support this budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak this evening? Any hands? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Buehme?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, I didn't want to come up again until I was sure everyone had, who wanted to speak-
I appreciate that, thank you.
Yes, Sally Buehme, 5 Blossom Drive. My heckler back there will be happy to know, I have a question for the Finance Director. With everything else in the budget the same, if we took out the $1,170,000 that is currently in this proposed budget, on page seven, as a revenue line called Federal American Rescue Plan Act, if we took out that $1,170,000, what would the mill rate be?
It would be slightly higher based on that.
How much higher would a million dollars? That was my calculation as well, one-third of a mill. We heard the First Selectmen say that the federal rescue money cannot be used to reduce the mill rate. The federal rescue money that's in this budget on page seven is being used to reduce the mill rate. You just heard the Finance Director say that without it, the mill rate would be three-tenths higher, we would have a mill rate increase. Because it's in here, we have a 1/100th of a mill decrease, in effect, a no-mill increase. So it is being used to reduce the mill rate. I am proposing, now let's, let's, let me just get it so everybody understands, we're getting lots of different money from the federal government under the American Rescue Act. Just to quickly review, 2.4 million for the Board of Ed, 2.3 million to the town, and another unknown amount to the town from what's called county money. We don't have counties in Connecticut, they were, a county, we have counties, we don't have a county level of government anymore, they were abolished in the early 60s. So because of that, we are getting a percentage of what is called county money, based on our proportion, our pro-rata share of New Haven County, based on our population and its pro-rata, pro-rata share of the total population of the county. Mr. Frida estimated at the April 21st Board of Finance meeting that it would be about 4 million, that's an estimate. I'm not, I am not suggesting we use one cent of that money, that 4 million for county, as, as Mr. Frida implied. What I'm saying is, of the 2.3 million that we're getting to the town, half this fiscal year, half in a couple of weeks, and half next fiscal year, that we use some of the money we're getting now, about half of it, 500,000, let's say, and add it to the revenue budget. So here's my question, if it's okay to use almost 1.2 million of the American Rescue Act money as a revenue source, why isn't it okay to use 1.7, which is what I'm suggesting, out of the 2.3 million? That still leaves 600,000 for other costs, for other unforeseen future expenses in the current fiscal year. If it's okay to use 1.2, why, to reduce the mill rate, Mr. Swakowsky said there'd be a higher mill rate without it, if it's okay to use 1.2, why isn't it, why is it not okay to use 1.7? And that's what I'm suggesting as another way, in addition to all of the reductions in expenditures that I suggested, this use of a little bit more of the 2.3 million, not all of it, a little bit more, as another way to give our hard-working taxpayers a little break this year. So I would like to know why it's okay to use 1.2, which is right here on page seven, but not okay to use 1.7. I am not suggesting that we put any of the other money into this proposed budget. Thank you very much for allowing me to clarify that.
Thank you, Ms. Buehme. I believe Mr. Frida is going to respond.
So, I have to, I have to share this with you, okay? That maybe because I do this every day, maybe because I deal with the federal government, and maybe because I'm so intricately involved at a state level, that I understand it better than others. So the 2.34 million dollars is spread out over two fiscal years. The first half is for this year ending June 30th. We have to use it and apply it to unbudgeted expenses, a loss of revenue, in this case, building permit fees, and other related items that fall under the category of lost revenue because of the pandemic. We have to apply it to certain COVID-related expenses. The 1 million, roughly 2, 1.2 million in next year's budget, has to be utilized the same way. Under Sally's plan, she wants to take a half a million dollars, and use it as a fund balance withdrawal as a revenue item. That will trigger a federal audit. That's the fourth time I said this tonight. We, Ed and I, are held accountable for how this money is used. We cannot have a federal audit by using any of that money to reduce a mill rate. Now look, if we didn't have the 1,200,000 for next year, it's less than a third of a mill is what it would have been, but we probably would have done something to still have a no-tax increase. And keep this in mind, the 1.2 million in this coming fiscal year, remember what I said earlier, we have a .4, a .4 tenths mill rate increase, that would have been 2.5 to 3 if there was no pandemic. So we've got to be very careful. I can make an argument that that's lost revenue because of the pandemic, and that 1,000,000, 1.2 million, it has to be applied to lost revenue. In other words, our grand list would have been greater if there was no pandemic, but it wasn't. So this 1.2 million you see in this coming fiscal year's budget has to apply towards lost revenue. Also, and I know this because I talk directly to the federal government, it can be utilized now with the additional guidance that's out there for police and fire and pandemic-related expenses, as I, as I just said. So remember this, ladies and gentlemen, if you remember nothing else tonight, I want you to remember two things. There's no tax increase, and you're looking at the guy that deals with this every day, dealing with the federal government, state government, and has the contacts that's giving you the, the best information. I'm not pulling information off Google and then drawing my own conclusion on it, I'm dealing with it every day. We will not, and I will not, put the citizens of North Haven in a situation where there's a federal audit.
Okay, Ms. Buehme? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Buehme, can we have Mr. Piper speak for the first time, and then I can call you back? Thank you.
William Piper, 28 Bassett Road, I'm also a selectman. I think some of the comments tonight have been out of order. This has not been a sloppy budget process, this has not been a grandstanding by Mr. Frida in terms of a state of a union address. He said the same thing four times tonight, he said the same thing at the Selectmen meeting numerous times, he said the same thing at Board of Finance meeting- He said the same thing at Board of Finance meetings numerous times. I'm not sure what people don't understand. I think he's, I think the budget is a good budget. I think people have worked hard on it. These are difficult times, and there is no budget, there is no mill rate increase. I'm not sure what people don't understand. Thank you very much.
I'm going to have Ms. Wayme come back, and then Ms. Caldwell.
Okay. So you're saying that you can't use any of the 1.7 we get in this fiscal year as a fund transfer? But what I want to respond to is what you said also. You said that without, if we did not get, or did not have, the 1.2 million that we can use in this proposed budget, if we did not have that 1.2 million, we would have figured out other ways to have a no-mill rate increase. Why can't we have both? Why can't we have the 1.2 million that keeps it at a no-mill rate increase, plus those other ideas that you said we would have used to get the mill rate lower? Why can't we do both and give the taxpayers a little bit of a break in a year, a tough year, when many of our working-class citizens are still struggling? Why can't we do both? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Caldwell?
I just have a quick comment. I'm here tonight to hear more about the budget, to hear people's feedback, to hear from everyone about their opinions or get questions answered, and I'm just not really sure why, why we would be insinuating that people are not understanding or not getting the point, and why there needs to be a tone that is not necessarily respectful. So I, you know, you can agree or disagree with Sally or Mr. Frida, but I think we should be able to have conversation and ask questions without people coming up and insinuating that if you don't agree with the budget, somehow or another, there's something wrong with you, or that you are misinformed, or that you are putting someone down. So I just, I am requesting, as a North Haven citizen, that we have a tone of respect that allows people to ask questions, to have a debate, because that's how we have a better town, a better community, and we have a better budget for everyone. So I'm, I don't have anything left to say about the budget right now, but I just really do not like when people are giving opinions and it becomes a tone where your, people are being put down for their opinions or being told that they don't get it. So I'm just respectfully requesting that for any other conversation that goes on, that we change our tune where it's just a debate about people's opinions or questions that they have, without it becoming more of an aggressive conversation.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone? Mr. Piper?
And I agree with Mrs. Caldwell. You know, I think what irritated me was the notion that, or the claim that this was a sloppy budget process. I don't think it was sloppy at all. I think it was a well, it is a difficult times. I think, I think as the other speakers who got up in favor of the budget said, you know, they respected what the finance, what the finance, the Board of Finance did to make this work, and I think that's what concerned me. I felt that comment was out of order and should have been, you know, from the moderator, should have been objected to, because I think that wasn't in keeping what you've just said. And I agree that, you know, we should have a dialogue, but we shouldn't be talking about this process being sloppy, because I think that has not been the case. So, you know, you and I are in total agreement. Thank you.
Mr. Katz?
I didn't mean it was a sloppy budget. I think it needed more investigation on the part of the Board of Finance as to the request of the department heads. Now, I could have gone through the same amount of money, but I think they needed to investigate a little deeper, as they have in many, many years for budgets.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening? Any hands? Okay. I believe that that has concluded discussion. So I would now like to have the town clerk come up to read the second and final item to be considered this evening. Thank you, Valerie. Agenda item number two, "To establish the due date and number of installments for the payment of property taxes." In North Haven, we have real estate taxes, personal property, motor vehicle, and supplemental motor vehicle taxes, in accordance with Section 12-142 and 12-144A of the Connecticut General Statutes. Therefore, be it resolved that upon approval of the town budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2022, and in accordance with Section 12-142 and 12-144 of the Connecticut General Statutes, insofar as the adoption of the budget costs for the laying of a tax on property other than motor vehicles, the tax shall be due in two semi-annual installments on July 1, 2021, and January 1, 2022, respectively, and shall be payable without penalty by August 2, 2021, and February 1, 2022, respectively. Is there a second?
Second.
And be it further resolved that insofar as such tax applies to motor vehicles, in accordance with Section 12-144A of the Connecticut General Statutes, such tax shall be due in a single installment, excuse me, a single installment, and as to, I'm sorry, a single installment due on July 1, 2021, and payable without penalty by August 2, 2021, and as to supplementary taxes on motor vehicles, as provided in Section 12-71B of the Connecticut General Statutes. Such tax shall be due in a single installment on January 1, 2022, and payable without penalty by February 1, 2022. Is there a second?
Is there any discussion on the resolutions that the town clerk just read?
We will now vote on the resolutions, which is item number two of the agenda. So all in favor of the resolutions, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Signify by nay. Any opposed? Any abstention? Okay. The motion passes. So this, as noted before, the vote upon the actual budget will occur at referendum on Tuesday, May 18, 2021. The minutes of this meeting, as well as the results of the budget referendum, will be reported by the town clerk as soon as possible. Being no further business for the town meeting, I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Second? Thank you. This meeting is adjourned. Good evening.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.